All right, thank you. The first item for discussion this evening is going to be police services agreement. The police services agreement. for those who are not aware of it, we've went out to contract our police services out to St. Charles County Police. Our contract's up for renewal this year, so one of the main concerns with the board has been to increase the number of police that are on our streets throughout the day and into the evening hours as well. So that's kind of the primary. There was a bit of a renegotiation following some discussions back and forth in the board in the last several months. And our city administrator has finalized that. So Kathy, over you.
Thank you. Yes, the county and the city of Darden Prairie have come to an agreement on this police services agreement. It will be a four-year term. As the mayor indicated, we are increasing the number of officers on the streets from two to four, so doubling our police for services in Darden Prairie. Now, this is in response to citizen concerns related to safety, in particular, speeding and subdivisions. And so we'll be happy to have those officers on board. I've asked the board to do two readings this evening so we can move forward and they can hire the officers for the position. We'll look to have these officers on the street probably in mid-July. And it is item I-7 on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Does the board have any questions or comments on this topic? Unheard? Okay. On to the next. So chickens. Chickens has been a hot topic for the last several meetings. Just to kind of clarify, we're not making any major changes here. This, the changes for tonight's meeting are not to make any major adjustments. It's more just to bring clarification and some continuity to some of the rules and laws that are that we, that we have. So I will kind of open it up to the board for any, any further discussion. But Kathy, if you want to give a better explanation than I know that you have been working on this with city attorney, so if you want to give, write some clarity to folks in the audience as well, that'd be.
So chickens are addressed in two sections of city code, in the zoning code and also in the, excuse me, the regulations regarding animals and the keeping of animals. And it was confusing to individuals trying to interpret where we actually allow chickens. There was even some confusion on staff's part. So what we've done is, the city attorney has amended the section, section 205.085 of our code related to providing for the regulation of domesticated animals to clarify and add the language that they're only allowed in the R-1A single-family district. In addition to this, because some people may not know or be aware what zoning they're actually in, we plan to put an FAQ on our website that actually addresses chickens specifically. We'll explain in detail for individuals whether or not they can keep chickens and what the regulations are related to chickens in layman's term rather than in code R-1A. What exactly does that mean? So, and then do an educational campaign through our HOAs as well to help educate them on where chickens are allowed in the city and where they're not. And that is item six on the agenda this evening.
Any further comments from the board on this? I know we've talked about it in at least two, maybe three work sessions and kind of gotten to this point where but any additional comments or thoughts on the board?
Right.
By default, would R-1A wouldn't, that whatever the 10,000, it's R-1A, it's a one-acre lot. So it could be scored technically because it doesn't qualify. Essentially, might be confusing to your point, which is what I would see is that it probably old wording that was kept in there, but I would defer to the city.
Right, so the, the, the regulations here are the animal regulations that are essentially what the city adopted that is consistent with St. Charles County. And that's why the initial issue of the zoning district problem, right, where it was there, there is allowed it in more districts than the rest. We adopted this in what the county provides. And so that's just another example of something that the county has that doesn't necessarily apply to the city. But in this case, it's that 10,000 square feet or more. And so it is, it is confusing, but it is consistent in the sense that the R-1A district is one acre. And so effectively, you can't have it on less than one acre. You can't have chickens on less than one acre. But to your point, that language does. Right, and I, I'm not disagreeing. I think that was just an oversight and that can be.
And so perhaps we would want to just, if we move forward tonight, barring any other comments, we would amend, approve with amending that to score that line. Well, are there any other residential one-acre lots or more that are not R-1A? Yeah, I think that probably is the most expeditious approach. I agree. So we 43560.
Be more clear for.
Is there anything else that within this amendment that anybody found distant or had any questions or concerns? I don't think it was ever permissible.
So I understood that we always had the one-acre restriction. So in the city's zoning code, it was always the use of having chickens was always limited to R-1A district. Right, so in situations where there's people that have chicken coops or chickens in the R-1A district, they were operating consistent with the zoning code as the use itself. Now, the zoning code wasn't changed and has been consistent in that manner this entire time. It was just fixing this issue of all residential zoning, right? So if there was a person that had it in a non-R-1A district, then that use was not clients with the zoning code. And so it's not changing the strictiveness in that.
Right, so that would in that case, it seems like it would be more of a equitable offense that they're applying with ordinance.
Well, yeah, I'm just saying that if. Right, that would, that would have to be reviewed into terms of because the, the, the distance requirements have been, are not.
But that's, but the thing is, is that's never, not like we're to go up and say, by the way, this is changed, please correct it because it's changed. That's never changed. It's always. Yeah. But when um, I think that, so the primary thing is, is that Alderman Waters' question is, if somebody has a chicken coop on less than one acre, there, you know, good chance it was not R-1A and therefore it was not client before. And that's why we're doing this. Because I think that the confusion initiated from, or initially came from state legislation that identified chicken coops being unable to be regulated by HOAs. People at that point thought and then those rules and regulations around, people thought that there was no ability to restrict at all. And they just, quarter-acre lots that were ever zoning were buying chickens without fully understanding it. And as a result, liberation of chickens and our subdivisions move forward. So that's why we're clearing this up. So it's better understood by the residents. As far as enforcement of it, that's another topic for another. Get this through and then is we provide clarity to the HOAs and residents and we kind of move forward with that and let hopefully clean up organically, solve itself. My perspective on it, so. Sorry, I cleared my throat. All right. Any other questions on, any other questions, concerns on chicken policy, chicken ordinance that we have on the agenda? Yeah, I think whenever we move forward, we amend it as one acre for section one, paragraph C, subsection two, change 10,000 square feet or more to one acre. I think that should resolve it for all of our large recommendations.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment. I was just reading through this and I noticed that the operative language of section one of the ordinance is not, is incorrect in terms of the section that is being amended. I would ask that an amendment be made as well to operative language of the ordinance, of section one of the ordinance to reflect that section 205.085 section that is being like section 205.085.
Okay, so 05C.
Well, the, the entire there's.
All the references to section are incorrect. It should have been, instead of 110.195, it should be 205.08.
Ah, I see. Yeah, in section.
Subsection B, it should say C.
That, that we that, that's, that's all I have.
Thank you. We will be a lot of amendments.
What I'll do is once we vote as amended, draft a new.
Okay, thank you for the certification. All right, so enough of the chickens. We'll go to item three for discussion, which is the order of the agenda. Questions? All right, well, that's, that's the case. We've got Yeah, I am. Just saying, if that's the case and nobody else wants to talk, we've got 40 minutes, so we'll move forward with staff communications. Uh, city attorney.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor.
All right, city engineer?
I have nothing.
City administrator?
Okay, I'll mic up for both of you. Um, so the mayor and I met with Americom to discuss IT, IT changes and goals. This is the first step in updating city hall technology and our public interfacing software. Staff had a kickoff meeting with Evergreen, who is our pay plan consultants. And there's going to be a period of data collection by the city. We're working to put all the information. They need to get started. The first step in the process will be to benchmark cities that are comparables and competitors. And then the consultants will have a lot of work to collect data from those benchmark cities and move forward with the pay plan study and finalizing it. So it'll be, you know, probably a, an eight, eight-week minimum process to, to get us to a presentation on a pay plan. We had the bid opening for a town square. Maybe, maybe Matt wants to jump in and comment on that.
Yeah, I can comment on that. Town square, we had five applicants. We had a low bid, about 80,000 under our cost estimate of Burns and Jones. And we are proceeding, we've gone ahead and sent in our bid concurrence to MoDOT and we're waiting to hear back with their response.
Just to familiarize the board or remind the board of that process. So we have to get MoDOT approval first and then it'll come back to the board for approval. I also wanted to mention that the Economic Development Council had a business outreach event today at the Cardinals ballgame. They host and they invite municipal representatives and economic development participants, developers, et cetera, for a good networking event. I've been participating, I participated with the city of St. Peters previously. And it's, it's been a great way to network and get to know not only our municipal counterparts and their economic development efforts, but what's going on in the development community. And then tomorrow night is the Taste of County event here at Darden Prairie, city hall in our park. This is a city-sponsored event with the Western St. Charles County Chamber of Commerce. It is a ticketed event. It is tomorrow from 5 to 7 and it's a, I've not participated before, but I understand it's a great food and drink and, and social event here in our park. And I think the weather is supposed to be beautiful, so it's a good opportunity to, to come out and enjoy that.
Thank you. Yeah, tomorrow's going to be a fun time, so. Go on out if you can make it. Alderman? Board approved the resolution.
The board approved the resolution, sending it to planning and zoning to hold a public hearing. That, from there, it'll come back to the board.
I think.
What, what posting are you referring to?
Posting was.
I'll have to review the Facebook posting, but my, the press release that the city put out did not state that this was approved as a moratorium. It was stated that the resolution was approved to send it to, to planning and zoning for a public hearing.
Well, I'll read it right now, so there is no fusion here on what it says. So the city of Darden Prairie Board of Aldermen has approved a resolution initiating a one-year moratorium on the acceptance and consideration of rezoning applications for the development of multifamily dwellings and in particular apartments. This temporary pause will allow the city to study and evaluate the broader impact of multifamily housing on local neighborhoods, schools, infrastructure, and overall community character. In recent years, several new apartment projects have been approved throughout the city, prompting increased public interest and concern regarding issues such as traffic, school capacity, property values, and the preservation of open spaces. This moratorium provides an opportunity for city leadership to work closely with the Planning and Zoning Commission in reviewing existing policies, regulations, and development standards related to multifamily housing. Goal is to ensure any further development aligns with the values of our community and supports the long-term health, safety, and welfare of our residents, as Mayor Keith Whitman. During the moratorium period, the Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct a thorough review of the city's current zoning ordinances and gather public input. Public hearing will be scheduled for June 11th. Further engage the community and begin discussion on how to, how best to address the impacts of multifamily developments. This proactive step reflects the city's commitment to responsible growth and maintaining the high quality of life that Darden Prairie residents value. More information, contact Kathy Pratt, city minister. So I think just from the beginning, it says, it's approved a resolution, not say adopted. wording was not in it. Yeah, I think it's, you know, nuances of city processes with Robert's rules. It's, you know, to not, you know, so to, to not put it out, we have to put it out. Have to say that the board approved a resolution and now there's a public here. So that's sort of the. Yeah, I believe that what we voted on covered a lot of those questions, but I think as well, the public information will go into more detail. Flush that out in greater depth of detail, especially with the public and we're going to be there and move forward with deliberate and thoughtful. Okay.
I have, I have something.
Yep.
Um, I was asked by a resident about the lack of curbs on Stump Road by N. And it is kind of unusual. I was talking to Matt a little bit about it before. So just trying to understand why there aren't curbs on a certain section on Stump Road. And a related topic, there is high grass on Stump Road by the entrance to Whispering Pines on the left-hand side. And it's, I've been told, I had a conversation with Jeff about it. I've been told that there's cleanup that needs to be done and the grass cannot be safely cut until the construction company comes along and cleans it up. So I, I mean, we've also been, well, Matt was told too by the construction company that it was supposed to be done hopefully by the end of the month. So maybe that's just a temporary thing. I don't know if my thing is working or not. It's not. And I'm like on, almost on top of it. Now it is, okay, I almost have to have it in my mouth. So those are the, exactly. So those are the two things I had residents ask me about. And then I guess another thing that somebody asked about related to Stump Road was there's an old utility box. Can it be removed? I don't think it's functional. And I talked to Matt about that too. And I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just, you know, because that would be very mean. But I did want to mention it. If there's a way that we can, the old, it's like, it's, it's probably like this tall and it's about this wide and kind of leaning. And Jeff said, if you open it up, it's like corroded batteries and all kinds of stuff. So it's probably not working. But it's the old utility box. It's right in the midst of the construction on the side of Stump Road by the sidewalks. I know, you can't hear me again. I have to talk like.
Talking about an old utility box on Stump Road.
Correct.
You guys hear me? Seating Stump Road? Renovation?
Yes, seating, yes.
And the, the impression is it belongs to the city?
I, I don't know. I think that was the, I had a conversation with Jeff yesterday when he dropped off the materials and he said, that's part of the problem. That's we're trying to figure out who owns it.
The cable regenerator. So it could be old underground cables that was. Some sort of an access point they just left it. So, alright, well.
I'll, I'll respond a little bit on Stump Road, so. I, Matt and myself are very frustrated with the contractor, um, we've been pushing through HR green. To complete that road. The next step in the process is to, to do the diamond grinding, which will smooth out that pavement. Contractor does not want to do anything like sod replacement or this mowing. Up until they finish the diamond grinding, they keep pushing us off. I'm sure weather's been part of it. I believe they have to rent this piece of equipment. It's a very large piece of equipment, so. It probably just timing issues with them, as frustrated as I am, um, with that fact, so, but, um, we'll have, um, Matt follow up with them on the curbs. On the certain section of Stump Road, we weren't. Nine, so we can't answer that question on the spot. And then I'm guessing as you, as the discussion, uh, continued, that the old utility box is something that's was abandoned and we'll have to look at. Trying to identify who the owner is and see if there's any way to, to get them to. Take care of it, otherwise we wouldn't. To do that ourselves and that would be. The expense of the city, so we would have to contract for that work, so. But we can look into that for sure.
Okay. Alright, thank you guys, uh, anybody else have any additional comments? Heard, okay. Uh, that comes to me, um. I think Kathy covered a lot of it, you know, we had a good, uh. Economic Development Council hosted a good event today at the ballpark and. Had an opportunity to connect with, uh, some of the local community. Uh, leaders and developers in the area and discussing, uh, economic development in our city. Um, Taste of the, Taste of the Counties tomorrow, again, don't want to. Double down and reiterate too much, I think it's gonna be a great time. Pardon me? If you haven't been before. Um, it's a really fun event. Um. vendors from all over St. Charles County and West, was kind of specifically come out and, and they'll have samplings of. Food and drinks, some are bigger portions than others, but either way, it's. Uh, for 20 bucks, you come out and get your, get your, you know, fill of food and drink and. Uh, there's gonna be music out there as well, there's gonna be, uh, live music, uh, it's, it's a, it's a party. So highly recommend to come out and, uh, and tell your friends about it, it's a great event and we do once a year and, uh. Definitely worth, worthwhile in my opinion, so it's gonna be at 5:00 PM tomorrow. Uh, band starts at 5:10 and, uh, hope to see you guys there. Um. So I know that there's been some emails about the chickens that have come out, there's been a handful, or I say have, there's been a slew. Uh, so I think that tonight, you know, instead of going to each one individually and trying to re-explain it, I see a few folks in here who may have, uh, been, but that's kind of what we're talking about tonight. I hope we're. We're clarifying it. It's easier to say, here's what we did, thank you, so. Um, just want to make sure I know that there's been, uh, some communication coming my way in the last couple of days and had a chance to catch up with everything, but, um. Hoping that we kind of cleared the air on that a little bit tonight, and you guys also understand why we're. Going through it, there's, you know, multiple different jurisdictional. Rules or ordinances, state law. City law, former, you know, all this, as he said, county law, so we're just trying to make it easier for everybody to understand. And, uh, like we said in the HOA meeting a couple of weeks ago, we want to, once we get everything. Fully fleshed out and clarified in a manner in our own books, then we can, you know, provide that back to everybody else to help share with. Uh, with the folks in your neighborhood. Uh, that being said, we have a couple of things to discuss, so, uh, if you've been here before, you know, we have to go to closed session for certain items. Uh, we do that, I welcome you guys to stay for the regular works or the regular meeting. And, uh, but with that being said, uh, if you don't, thanks for coming out. I would like to entertain a motion to move to closed session pursuant to RSMO six, ten. Point zero two one, section two and three.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Give a roll call for that? Okay, I think a roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we will move to closed session, thank you.